This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the City Council Finance Committee meeting. We are meeting virtually. Due to the allowance by state law, currently it's still in place. First up is approval of the minutes for February 10th, nicely prepared by Councillor Peak. I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of February 10th. All those in favor, Tom Peak?
Aye.
Councillor Denham?
Aye.
And I say aye. Please present these to Barbara for archival. The mayor's here. Do you have any communication, Nicole, other than what's on the agenda?
Nope, nothing other than the agenda.
Okay, public speak. If you're here to speak to any item at all, you may speak now. There is agenda items. If you're here for the library, of course, we will allow you to speak at that time, too. Please raise your hand. Use the raise your hand icon under reactions at the bottom of the screen. Seeing none, let's go into new business. We have before us an appropriation from the Community Preservation Act of $15,000. As Chair of the Community Preservation Committee, I can tell you, we approved this unanimously. A little history of for why this is happening. The Community Preservation Committee has approved a number of appropriations to the library. For improvements, the most recent, I believe, was new ventilation. At the time, we were concerned about the architecture for that ventilation. And we are concerned, the committee is concerned, that this beautiful piece of architecture be preserved. Now, it's no secret that the library is very concerned about how large or how little space they have left in the building, and they may want to sell it and go into a larger structure. Also, the committee is concerned that if it's not preserved, and that possibility happens, why would we continue to approve supplemental appropriations? So the committee encouraged the library to seek a historic preservation deed restriction, a deed restriction which follows the building to whoever owns it. This requires by state law, a number of things to happen. And there is a cost to it. The cost is for appraisals, legal fees, baseline documentation, and other costs. And this is the first step in getting it to be on, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, the State Registry of Historic Buildings. Now, what does it mean?
It would just be a deed restriction that goes on the property documents as filed in the Registry of Deeds.
Registry of Deeds, okay.
Yeah, the State Register of Historic Places is a separate process.
So the CPA committee was very happy that the Library Association wants to preserve the building as we do. We consider it, along with Old Town Hall, to be one of the most beautiful pieces of architecture in the city. So this is the first step in that historic preservation unanimously approved by the CPA. And I'll turn it over to, who wants to speak first to this? Marge, would you like to speak to this? For the record, state who you are.
Marge Brenner-Gast. I'm on the library board. I'm vice president. So this conversation started because the building, like you said, it's a loved building. It's a building that we don't want to lose, but we also know really needs some attention. And honestly, if we wanted to sell it, nobody's going to really do anything other than work with what it is. I don't see us selling it. I see us utilizing it when we move into a new space. Utilize it how? I have no idea, but at least the foundation is solid again. I appreciate the conversation with the CPA. I appreciate the support in being able to look into this endeavor and bring it to the board and go over the pros and cons on both sides. And I think that's about all I have to say right now, unless you guys have questions about where we're at, what we're thinking. Overall, I just think it's a good common sense approach to look at a different avenue that could help the city keep a building that they love.
Jamie, can you explain how this procedure works, short term and long term?
Yeah, so short term, there's a number of steps that we would take with the Library Association and between the city to come up with sort of a list of understanding of what the goals of this preservation restriction would do. Once we agree, then we would go to work with a lawyer or attorney to draft up a legal agreement that would then be signed by both parties, as well as the state's Massachusetts Historic Commission. And they would need to approve that as well. And then, once that's all signed by all the parties, it would get filed at the Registry of Deeds. The $15,000 supplemental appropriation that's before you tonight is really just for the legal cost, the appraisals, if necessary, baseline documentation, the other costs surrounding the creation of that agreement. What it does not cover is the change in value of what the preservation restriction would do to the the market value of the building. There is a possibility that the change in value would be significant, and if that's the case, and the library wants to be compensated, that would have to be the subject of a separate appropriation or a separate conversation to figure out how that, those funds would come into play. Right now, the $15,000 really just to get us to that point, to make sure that we have a real understanding of what it would cost or what it would take, and have all the agreements drafted and ready to go other than that other appropriation if necessary.
Now, the other appropriation in my mind would happen if it was marketed, correct? I mean, the value would be diminished because of the historic preservation. Is that what you're saying?
So it would go to the current owner. So the simple example is if the building and the property are worth a million dollars, and the building is worth the property is worth $500,000. So the, and if the reduction, if putting a preservation restriction reduces the value from a million to 750,000, then the city could compensate the Library Association for that change in value. Those funds once, so in essence, the CPA would be buying the historic preservation restriction for the appraised value of that reduction of the market value.
But that's another debate and another discussion.
Correct.
Future.
And the other way, you know, so you can also use tax deductions or there are other methods to create value out of that. It can be considered charitable donation and can be taken as tax credits. I know for the Public Library Association's nonprofit, so that doesn't work. But there are other options that we will explore as we go throughout this process. And then, once those funds do transfer from the city to the library, they're no longer bound by CPA regulations. They would have been used for a CPA lawful purpose, but then the library can then do whatever they want with those funds. You know, and one of the things that was discussed was to create an endowment for future repairs or restorations or things like that. So again, that would be determined as part of this initial number of understanding or the initial work with this phase of the project.
Okay, councillors, questions? Anybody? Councillor Peak?
Yeah, so just, I might be totally off base about this, but feel free to correct me if I am. I guess one question that I have is, is there any concern on the part of anybody involved that putting a historical restriction on this property might end up being something that we end up like, so I'll give an example, you know, I've done the tours, as I'm sure all of you have, of Old Town Hall and and the renovations that they have been seeking funds for around accessibility. And that those are quite expensive. And the sense that I had is that those are somewhat more complicated and expensive as a result of the historic preservation restriction placed on there. Now, it's no secret, I love the library, I love what all of you do, but I have a number of older constituents' mobility issues who you know, are somewhat outspoken about the fact that there's certain, you know, certain parts of the library that right now are a little tricky for people with certain mobility challenges to access. And so I guess, just if I'm just doing my due diligence here before I sign off on any money, are we sure that we aren't potentially shooting ourselves in the foot here by putting a restriction on the building that might make, you know, like Marge says, if the library ended up holding on to the building and wanting to use it in some capacity and accessibility renovations came up in the future, is it possible that we're substantially increasing the cost of those renovations by putting this sort of restriction in place? And if I'm totally off base here, I'd love to be corrected on here. I'm just doing my due diligence.
I will say that I don't know how to define the word substantial in that case. But the CPA committee will not fund any more renovations of this library if it's not historically preserved, because one of the tenants of the CPA is to have preserve history. And we need to have that. And if ADA accessibility becomes an issue in the future, I don't think there would be any argument about having to do it. Whether it's substantial cost, Old Town Hall required an elevator. They have a ramp now in front of the building. We may be renovating that, and maybe there are new guidelines to that that's become a part of historic preservation. But this councillor doesn't see that as a problem. My problem is, I want to make sure that, given the nature of the library's needs, if there ever was a sale of the building, I don't want it to be a Starbucks, okay? Being a little dramatic here.
Be a very fancy Starbucks.
That's why we're doing this. And I think we, the historic committee in town is very much in favor of this because of that. I don't know if that answers your question, Tom, but I can't predict what costs will be increased because it's now deed restricted. There's no doubt, value may go down. If you could sell the spot and tear the building down, it's probably a lot cheaper, but are more valuable. I don't know. Jamie?
Yeah, I just, the short answer is, is yes. I think that the cost for construction, doing historically appropriate construction is always more expensive than building new. And that's one of the trade offs for the city to decide, and for Library Association to decide, is this worth it? One of the values is that through the Community Preservation Act, we can fund these historic preservation projects that are more expensive. So if you consider the cost of doing a redoing a slate roof, when you need a new roof versus doing it with asphalt shingles, the asphalt shingles are going to be much cheaper, but the, with this preservation restriction, with the sort of with the restriction in place, then that protects the city's investment. So a more expensive project will see those dividends for future, a longer amount of time. It's not going to just, like Dan said, be torn down and a Starbucks built in its place.
It's always cost more, in other words, as Jamie says, to historically preserve architecture.
Right. Now, if you, if you look at what the cost would be to do an ADA improvement, improvement, it may not be significantly different because the and there's no way that we would have an elevator that was historically appropriate to an 1850s building. It would always be a new elevator, and the new elevator is always going to, right. Exactly. So
Now, you're hired to pull the rope.
Beats being an economist.
So I don't, I couldn't, I can't say for sure, but I don't think that a new elevator is going to be more expensive being connected to a historic building than to a modern building if it's a retrofit elevator.
I mean, I guess that's really
Go ahead, Tom.
I guess really that's my thing is that, you know, the sense that I got is that some of those, like the elevator, were in some ways made more expensive by historical preservation concerns at Old Town Hall, although maybe I'm incorrect there. But that, to that, I guess is just like, I mean, I think that to some extent, both of you have done a good job explaining that future renovation costs for this sort of thing are not going to be available through CPA without a historical, you know, without a deed restriction, in which case, even if it does increase future costs, then that just kind of is what it is without, I mean, unless there's some sort of alternative way of looking at this. So I guess maybe that kind of answers my question. I just, I just want to make sure that if there was some sort of renovation to that library where it stayed a library, but maybe did something better, but that was not historically accurate, like, are you sure that's not something that we'd want to consider? Sorry, that was not the best sentence I've ever spoken.
This councillor won't, I mean, I want it to stay historically, the architecture to be maintained. The other thing that this opens the door to are grants. Because if it's historically preserved, it's easier to get historic grants, and the CPA can leverage those grants and help with extra costs being caused by it being historic building, I guess, Tom. I mean, I wouldn't want to see modern architecture added to the building just to like to expand it or something, if that was possible. Not if it's, I mean, even if it's deed restricted, I don't think you can do that, but that's just me. Jamie?
Yeah, so that's part of the deed restriction, part of the there's a, there's sections where you sort of define what the important pieces of historically significant pieces of the building are. So let's say going through the exterior, with the roof and the facades. So changes to those facades might be, and it'll say like, what is a minor repair? What's a major repair? What's a what would be, require approval of the city, what would require approval of Mass Historic Commission? Or what can be done, just sort of without any further notice, just basic maintenance. And so it tries to identify as clearly as possible. So you need to replace a window. Okay, fine, replace the glass, but if you want to replace the window with a modern you know, double thermal pane window, that's going to be a replacement window. Well, you need to get the approval of Mass Historic Commission.
Does that help, Tom?
It does. And I guess, so, all right, you've convinced me, this is fine. I guess what I would just say is that I would encourage all the parties involved when actually agreeing on this restriction, to just be thoughtful about, you know, keeping things flexible for future use, which I'm sure you will.
Connie, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I mean, I understand kind of the why, you know, we're moving in this and the desire to preserve that. There was talk that there's the potential of maybe the library using it for a different purpose. But I just want to make sure that if there is a different purpose, it would still be accessible by the public to be able to enjoy the building or use it for
That's part of the CPA requirements. It has to have a public purpose. Marge, can you better get into that, what you meant by a different purpose, or is that just a hypothetical?
It's a hypothetical, and I don't see closing the doors, because it is a beautiful building inside and out. And Tom, I wanted to speak to the accessibility, just so you understand, when we did the repair on the basement, and it was more repair than it was renovation, we spent like $20,000 to make the space look new, but we spent over $400,000 on the foundation, because it was crumbling on us. And to put an elevator at that time was going to up the cost to almost a half a million dollars extra. So and we struggled with, okay, we're going to stick this thing on the side of it. It's not even going to look right. How are we even supposed to do this? Where do we space it? And we knew we had to get it open as soon as possible. So I want you and all the constituents to know that we really, we want it accessible on every level. And in a small way, we have approached that by having the book bike out there, and items can be delivered. All ages can receive delivered items to their houses. It's a small chunk, because it would be nice to have everybody be able to get into the library. I think, walking through this process, being able to work with the CPA as a historical commission, they have done stuff like this with older buildings. Instead of us slapping on something and then later on going, damn, that don't look good. There will be people who have done this process that went, wait, this is what we did, and look at how it helped. And look at how good it looks. That's what my thought is, that the historical preservation, that the CPA, you guys have been on this path for so long that at some point, we're going to run into the right person that says, handicapped accessible? This is going to look spot on. You watch. This is what we can do. Will it be more expensive? I think it all depends on how the design plays out. But know that has always been our goal. We're trying to get there.
I have no doubt. Just to be clear, I'm not suggesting
And it's good, but it's good. But I want you to understand that we were up against a rock and a hard place. The last thing I wanted to do was spend a half million dollars and then stand back going, all right, now it gets stuck in the mud, because it wasn't designed the way it was supposed to. You know what I mean?
Right. I just want to make sure that future efforts there are not being somehow like held up by what we're doing here.
I totally get it. And Connie, just that the building needs to be available for the community, for whatever purpose. But the building will always have the issue of parking. That's the hard part. So that's where we stand.
Anybody else comment or question? Okay, then I'm going to take a motion if for approval of $15,000 from the CPA Historic Resources Fund to go to the Emily Wilson Library Historic Preservation Restriction.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to send to full council. This is supplemental appropriation of $15,000 for the Emily Wilson Library Historic Preservation Restriction. Any further discussion? Hearing non, Councillor Peak?
Aye.
Councillor Denham?
Aye.
And Councillor Riss says aye. This is up next week for public hearing, Marge, and anybody interested from the library.
Now, I ask
Yes?
Quick follow up to what Jamie said. We're going to sit and talk goals, which I think is perfect, spot on. But is that something like a separate meeting from a CPA meeting, or? Okay, so you'll keep us informed on that?
It can be. If it's CPA funds, then it is a CPA meeting. It depends on what
Okay. All right, but this was the first, I remember hearing, you've probably said it, that there's going to be a goal setting meeting, and I think that's perfect. I just want to make sure I'm remembering everything to tell the committee. So thank you.
I think when the process is all done, and you have a lot of documentation and information, appraisals, et cetera, that's when we sit down and talk, too.
Right, right. Okay.
I want to move on to, I promised, Hadal. We don't have any new information on COVID-19 grant funding, so we're going to skip that. But I'd like to do the review of quarterly fiscal reports, which I've put aside. And Hadal, I'm going to make you a a co-host, so you can pull up whatever you need. Oh, I think I made Tom Peak your co-host. Sorry, that wasn't Okay, Hadal, you can, you can share your screen and talk about where we are financially, especially with income, et cetera.
Thank you.
And this is second quarter numbers? Why did it go away?
Oh, I, hold on, let me because of the two screens, I got a little confused, which one I Okay, let's see. Can you guys see the report? Okay, okay. So yes, it is end of second quarter, which includes from beginning of the fiscal year, which started July 1st till December 31st of 2021. This report is to understand the layout of this report, up here it says 50%, because we are at the half mark, half, middle of the fiscal year. That's why it's 50%. This has three sections, which one, the first section is for general fund revenue, which starts from here till all the way till the total of general fund revenue and total of enterprise fund, and the net total of general fund and enterprise revenue.
So trends look good.
Yes. Total general fund revenue is made up of local receipts, real estate and property, personal property taxes, and local state aid. So going by section by section, all these sections are determined by state. It's part of our tax rate recap also, and all these accounts have been set up with accounting standards provided to audit by the state. What it shows here is, if I take motor vehicle, we have, this is our estimated budget. We made an adjustment when we did the tax recap. This is the revenue actual as of December 31st. We are not fully received the revenue, because motor vehicle is normally collected in February or March. This number will change. And this is the percentage of total what we collected versus what was estimated. These three columns are previous fiscal year. So where we were last fiscal year with respect to actual revenues, what was the variance from previous fiscal year to this fiscal year, and was the percentage collected was on the basis of the variance. So does that give you a little, this is the standard, and that's how the whole report has been prepared.
I think you already sent us a copy of this, but could you resend it? Because now people understand it to a certain extent.
Yeah, I might want to double check before I send my minutes out, because I've got my notes here, right? But just to be sure I understand, column L is like, how is that calculated? Is that column F over column D?
This is a plugged in number from last fiscal year, so this is just a comparison how we did in fiscal year 2021 versus how we are doing this fiscal year for 2022.
Oh, okay.
From the previous year's report. It's not a calculated, but last fiscal year, we would have been From the previous year's report, it's not a calculated, but last fiscal year, we would have been um, did the calculation and it would have came up like this number, so this number would have been here in last fiscal year, which is the uh, the comparison of total actual versus the actual estimated budget for the revenue for that particular line item. Yeah.
Okay, so we are, we're like, just some, so for instance, for, yeah, for row eight, for motor vehicle excise tax, we are ahead of where we were last year, because we're at twenty six point two four instead of fourteen point one three. Okay.
Yep, but if you compare this fiscal year, it, we should be at fifty percent.
But that's not, that's not usual for motor vehicle, cause that's collected in the March, February.
Yes, and the reason for that is why we are not at fifty percent in this cat, particular category is because all the motor vehicle collections takes place in February, so when we do a quarter ending report, March thirty first, uh, and we'll be comparing this number as a seventy five percent because we are into three quarters of, into fiscal year, uh, this number would, should be around seventy five.
So, um, just to move down our tax collections and uh, those kinds of things are on, on pace, you're not worried at all about those?
No, uh, so I'll, I'll get to that one also, once we get through all these revenue pieces, just the local estimates. Um, so I just explained the whole concept behind this spreadsheet, how it needs, it should be read as. Um, then all these estimates are done when we do our budget. Um, these are the adjustments when we do finalize our tax recap. And this column is actual to date, and this is the percentage collected. We see as a bottom line total for um, local receipts. So we should technically be at fifty percent, but we have collected hundred and nineteen percent, so that shows that we, we are, we are going in the right direction. We can also go by line by line to see if there is any concern, but for me, there is no concern at this point. Uh, we are pretty much on target and in a good shape with respect to collecting local receipts. The second portion of the general fund revenues are uh, real estate and pro- uh, personal property taxes. Um, these one, these numbers will change in January because all of our actual bills went out in January. That's why this number looks low, but um, again, by quarter ending, March thirty first, these number will get better. Or should get better, I would say. But still, with that average, we are at forty nine point eight two compared to fifty percent, so pretty close.
And that's basically exactly where the city was this time last year.
Last year, yes, yes, yeah. Um, this is state local aid money, which we get from state um, on cherry sheet. We are right on target, fifty point seven five. Overall, general fund revenue, we should have been at fifty percent, we are at fifty two point fifty six percent, which is a little bit over, and we don't have to worry about it at this point.
Okay.
So that's general fund revenue. The second piece of the big chunk of the revenue comes from the enterprise fund. Enterprise fund is water and sewer, so any collection from water sewer will be recorded under this section. Um, again, we are right on target, uh, these two water rates and sewer rates should have been fifty percent. We have collected fifty one point nine nine and fifty four point ten percent in water and sewer respectively. Bottom line, again, we should be at fifty percent, at least to be in a good shape. It's adding up to fifty four point four three, we are doing good there also, uh, combined general fund revenue and water and sewer revenue, we are at fifty two point seven three percent with our revenue collection.
And uh, our other, I know CPA revenues are good, is there any other? Anything else you wanna report on, any, any expense items that you're concerned about? But I know it's very early in that, and the mayor is on top of that. Um, I know, like, for instance, we recently did a fire supplemental because they were short on their budget. Is there anything that, that either you or the mayor are concerned about in the expense area?
So with respect to expense, uh, we have a really good um, internal control policy here. Uh, we do not let any department deficit spend. Uh, if they have to spend, um, if they have to spend any money, they have to have the money in their budget before I will approve their purchase order.
To hear.
Because, yes, uh, because, or if they need money, then of course they have to come to city council, and those purchase orders will be on hold um, till we get the appropriation, so like the one with fire department, I, it just got pros- um, approved, and I got bunch of purchase orders this week to be processed under their department because they were on hold, same with um, IT department, they were on hold for the longest time yeah, until the appropriation was not approved, um, and we'll be processing it this week or hopefully by next week.
I'm glad you said that, cause that's important for the public who may see this video to hear that we have control, we don't do deficit spending, we're not the federal government, thank God. If you want, I wanna know where the money printing company is.
No. The only one is uh, is allowed at this point is um, CARES and FEMA, other than that, everything has to have the backup and everything needs to be collected um, by uh, September thirtieth with respect to our clothes, otherwise it hits our free cash.
We are allowed to deficit spend in the snow area by state law.
Yes, that, that's another.
And that may happen this Friday, but that can be covered by us uh, at the end of the fiscal year.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I, I, just following up on what Counselor Riss said, do we have a similar spreadsheet though of like um, city spend so far and how it, like, what share of the budget has been expended so far?
Uh, no, there is only one report which I prepare as a part of uh, my closing uh, for June thirtieth. Uh, we do have reports which shows um, department by department. Um, I, I can share that with, with you guys, but I don't have a report like, just like look, which looks like this, or I maintain it every time because, you know, it's um, it's always moving, it's like every week we will process warrant, there is a change, every week we process payroll, it changes if there is any appropriation. If there is any adjusting journal entries, if there are new purchase order put in the system, it constantly changes, so we do not have a per se, like a spreadsheet uh, for expenses, but I do run a expense control report for all the departments at the end of the month and distribute, view it to them, it's their responsibility to make sure that everything looks right. I check them before I send it to them, if there is anything concerning, I bring it to their attention.
Well, since that's public, Tom, I guess you could ask for an expense control report for any department you want, but I don't necessarily feel we should go into that tonight.
I don't know if we need to go into it tonight, but next time we do this, it could be interesting to look at.
This is, uh, I apologize, this is new, can you go back to the one night, like, how did we get a hundred and nineteen percent?
We collected more than we needed.
Oh, well, no, that's what I assumed, but that just feels like a lot, so is that number going to go down by the, the end of the year? I'm just trying to understand.
I don't think so, I think it's a hundred.
So, because, it, it's about, it starts with the budget, so we budget uh, and our revenue estimates are conservative. So it's just telling us that we estimated that we are gonna collect hundred thousand, but we end up collecting hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes, it's not, i- it's a conservative um, revenue estimate, uh, which we do during the budget process, which is gonna start pretty soon.
And that's why, Connie, we have a lot of free cash.
Uh-huh, okay.
Well, that's. Yeah, this is.
Cause we conservatively budget revenue.
Okay.
Yeah, thi- this is just a one piece of that free cash, so if, if we estimated a expenses, let's say a hundred thousand again, and we only spent um, twenty thou- um, we only spent eighty thousand, so there is a twenty thousand dollars which was left in the budget as an expense. So that closes at the end of the year to the free cash. On the revenue side, we estimated that we are gonna collect hundred thousand, but we end up collecting hundred and twenty thousand, so that another twenty thousand closes to general, um, general fund at the end of the fiscal year, which makes it forty thousand as a free cash. But there are other uh, factors also taken into consideration while we do the calculation for free cash. But these are the two big pieces from the budget contributes towards that calculation.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
And it looks like, if you scroll up a little bit, part of that was that our collections on um, the uh, on, on the meals tax and cannabis tax were substantially, substantially higher uh, than what we had budgeted, uh, yeah, there we go.
Yes.
Yeah. Three hundred percent, two hundred percent.
I kinda, I think on the cannabis side, I, I think I agree with the mayor in her budgeting of those conservatively.
I agree too, especially during a pandemic.
Pardon me?
I, I said I agree too, especially during a pandemic, I, we, we had no idea where we were gonna be, and, and the cannabis market right now is sort of in a strange place with increasing competition, we don't know what that's gonna do to price, so I agree, it's better to be conservative with this and assume that we're gonna have a rough year and then have some free cash that we get to figure out what to do.
Exactly, if, if you over budget and you spend it, the last thing we want is to be in deficit ever, that happened two thousand and eight because we had a very bad fiscal year, and we had to try for an override, which the citizen said no to, and that was a long time ago in a galaxy far, far away, but this counselor was there, and I don't wanna have to ever see that, so I appreciate the mayor and uh, being conservative in her revenue estimates in a lot of areas so that we never get into deficit issues.
Cause then, speaking of the mayor, I just got a text saying that her uh, internet, speaking of the mayor, I just got a text saying her internet is kicking out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'd like to conclude this, thank you, Hadel, any, any other questions? Omar, I haven't heard from you, do you have any questions? Hadel, can you stop this here, please?
No, I won't be. Oh. I thought you said that you're not obese, oh, that, I misunderstood your question, sorry, there we go.
No, I just wanted to see everybody and I couldn't, okay.
Thank you for that, helpful.
Yeah.
I wanna begin uh, our discussion on stipends, I'm gonna share the screen. Uh, this is where we are today with compensation. I don't wanna deal with elected officials, cause I've asked Barbara to get a more up to date comparison with other cities and towns. But the one thing that we talked about last term, and Counselor Gomez was with me at that time, was um, whether or not the Board of Public Works, the Planning Board um, and, and uh, say the Board of Assessors, which gets, they all get a very low stipend, the Board of Assessors gets a little more. Should we not increase them? We chose not to last term. I think we should, out of respect for the work they do, in my opinion, the Board of Assessors, the Board of Public Works, and the Planning Board being regulatory bodies with a tremendous amount of responsibility ought to get more of a stipend. On the other hand, historically, so you all know this, I always asked those boards in the past, do you guys wanna see an increase? And they say not necessary. So there's two sides to this, do we want to show that we respect their work and increase their stipends? I feel we should, I don't know how much, I'd just like to feel the committee's feeling on this, these are increased through ordinance. So we write an ordinance saying that the Board of Assessors will go up to a hundred dollars a month, or the Board of Public Works, which gets three hundred dollars a year, which I think is extremely low, uh, might get a hundred dollars a month, I don't know. Uh, I just feel like we ought to show some respect for these ma- major regulatory boards. So I'd like to hear what other counselors feel, in this area only, not in the elected officials, Thomas.
You know, one that I, that comes up to me as well is that currently, am I reading this right, that the Board of Health receives nothing?
Yeah, there you go.
Cause they've had a hell of a last couple of years.
But if it's a planning board meeting, you'd see what the hell they go through.
No, I've been to plenty of planning board meetings.
That complain to the Board of Assess, I mean. But I guess we don't have any problem getting people to stay on the planning board, I mean, I don't know, I, I I feel it's more of a respect to the fact that they do a hard work for us, and we ought to pay them something. A lot of communities do. What do you think, Connie?
Yeah, I agree, I think, you know, as a, as a community, I think it's about demonstrating appreciation and respect for the time that people give. Um, and so, you know, I also respect the I, the fact that they're saying that's not necessary. Um, but I, but I do, I do believe as a, as a kind of elected body that we show the community that we're saying that these are valued positions and that we want to compensate them for their time.
The other thing to think about is, this was brought up at one point. Um, if they got a little compensation, let's say they have a childcare problem, and, and they have to hire a babysitter so they can attend an in-person meeting, which used to be the case and will be the case soon. Um, that's something where this compensation can help. It's just a thought, you know, so, uh, I don't know how far we wanna go, I wouldn't, uh, uh, as a CPA member, I don't think we should, well, I'm not, I can't get paid extra, but um, my feeling is like the Board of Health maybe including them as well, because they are a regulatory body as well as the others. I mean, the Board of Public Works, they raise sewer rates, they, they are.
Yeah, it's tough work.
And they have to face a difficult public when they make those kinds of decisions. You know what I mean, so? How about if I come up with a figure and then we can debate if it's too much? I'm sure the mayor and general say, wait a minute, you're gonna increase that, that's twenty thousand dollars more. But I, I'd like to try it this time, we ignored it last time. We spent our time on the mayor's uh, salary last time and a couple of small increases for the president of the council, the chair of the school committee. I know we will be looking at the council as uh, an increase because that hasn't been increased in a long time, but again, compared to other communities, we don't pay our boards much money. So maybe I'll do, I'll, I'll take this spreadsheet home and come up with figures next time.
Right, I mean, I guess, just sort of preempting the conversation that you had. Um, I'd be interested in hearing uh, from the mayor about, you know, what sort of increases, you know, could be easily fit into a budget and then sort of maybe backing out from there, but I, I agree that when we're looking at certainly, Planning Board, Public Works, Assessors, Board of Health, these are groups that, like you said, they have to deal with some pretty intense topics and some um, they have to make some pretty intense decisions, and it, it seems like it, just having something to reward the amount, if not to reward, to compensate them rather, for the, for the sacrifices that they make to, to be there and do that stuff is, I mean morally, I, I just, I believe that that is sensible.
And the other thing I thought of uh, was that we can make this effective for the next fiscal year, not the one coming up. Uh, not June first, twenty twenty two, but June first, July first, twenty twenty three, giving the administration time to prepare for that budget increase. Um, we could do that, we can make any ordinance effective date, whatever we want.
Right.
Or we could make it July, January first, so that it could be paid for with uh, maybe free cash or something, but Nicole, have you got your internet back, and do you have a comment on all this?
I, 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 it's back for right now, so I'll apologize if I cut out, um. Yeah, I mean, I appreciate the conversation, um, uh, that's going on, and, and to appreciate our, you know, volunteer public servants. Um, surely, the last couple of years have been. the last couple of years have been really challenging really for us all. Um I would, on a a procedural note, I I would just say that I would appreciate any um recommendation that the council would put forward around stipends for volunteers and also city um employees who are also receiving stipend pay, but um my recollection is that the council um can cut money um but can't raise it or assign it. So I I just wanna put that on the table. Um another is, um I think we have to balance the stipends or what we're doing um against other programs that we've recently re- uh created. Um none of this is a big, you know, pile of of jelly beans, but every bean, you know, counts in ways something and, you know, when I think of the other tax credits and what what we're going to need to do and why to do with um social services, I just get a little uh concerned about that. Um I think a survey of those who serve on boards um would be good to see how they feel about it, but um you know, it's, it's another thing we have to, you know, we need to consider down down the road, what what is sustainable and and just, of course. You know, I mean, there's, there's always a way to give stipends to board members. I, you know, I I would say we can't judge what, like Board of Health takes probably the prize right now of really being in the spotlight, but um then anybody who serves should get one because we don't know what what they're giving um up or or just that they're giving their time. Uh we could always, you know, balance that by taking the stipends given to the board members out of the city council's stipend budget. Um that's always a way to to solve that. Uh but I I'm open the conversation with would would like to, yeah, you see delayed reaction, but uh I'm not against it. I I just, and I I don't know how.
The one comment she made that that hits home is we really don't know how much work the Conservation Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and those other boards make. And why aren't we giving them something? So that's that's something to consider. Again, I just wanted to introduce this.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I I I think your comments are well taken.
And also.
Go ahead. Are you still there, Mayor?
And I would just say the administration, the administration of all of those payments and people coming and going off of the board. I mean, it sounds again like a little thing, but you're you're quickly talking over fifty people and keeping track of them and tax IDs and and whatnot. Um it, there's an administrative burden to it as well.
I'd be curious to find the history of why, like, the Board of Assessors got seventy-five dollars a month and the Board of Public Works only got three hundred a year. It's interesting how that was established prior, probably during the town meeting days, and it was just carried over.
Maybe.
I don't think any of this, th- this is all very old. We haven't touched this, not in my history. Uh and at least I don't recall it, so um but the the uh back in the day, I guess, those particular areas, people considered them very important. Um so anyway, I just wanted to introduce it. I'll come up with figures next time. Think about what the mayor said. Think about wh- whether we should go forward with this. And the mayor's right. I mean, we can write the ordinance, but it's subject to appropriation, so I wouldn't want to make this effective until a year from now in order that perhaps budgetarily it can be activated, but that's just to give time for it. But that's if we do anything. Jennifer has her hand up. Oh my gosh, she's alive.
I am. You don't, I'm listening, taking it all in. Um I just wanna say, and this is just my two cents, that it's easier budgetary-wise to make these things effective on the fiscal year start. But I know that, you know, with elected officials, that doesn't always coincide. Um so just food for thought. I mean, the thing is, is if you if it's made effective January first of twenty twenty-three, then it would prob- it would have to be appropriated for unless it's figured into the July first budget this year.
I'd have no problem with July first for next year. I don't wanna touch this year's budget. That's why I'm not a I it's not as urgent as I thought because I think if we do anything, we can wait on it. Again, because nobody's asking us for this. And I think what I'm gonna do is get from Barbara uh the chairs of each of these committees and find out how they feel about their stipends or lack thereof and try to get that to everybody. All right, uh Tom and Connie.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
All right, and next time we will talk about the city council if I get them more information and the and the school committee, um so that that those might be considered. There is some people who'd like to see uh those increases. Okay?
Sounds good.
I have nothing else this evening. If anybody else has anything, we do have the pay plan and the fifteen thousand we just did on the public hearing agenda uh for this week. Okay?
Sounds good.
No.
So could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
Motion to adjourn?
Uh second.
We have a motion to adjourn. Uh all in favor? Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Dunn?
Aye.
Counselor Riz says aye. And I wanna thank you, Hadel, for a very good report. And thank you, Jen, for your thoughts.
You're most welcome.
Okay. We'll see you guys later.
Bye.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.